Now convene a regular study session of the Mesa City Council. The first item on our agenda, and hopefully someone can hand an agenda to Mr. Heredia, is to review the items on the agenda for the October 2nd council meeting. So council, I would direct your attention to that agenda. The first several items are liquor license applications. Agenda item five are various purchase contracts. Item six is authorizing resolutions. And seven is setting a, introducing an ordinance and setting a public hearing. Currently there, it's a fairly short agenda and there's nothing off of the consent agenda.
That's correct, Mayor. And if you'll notice, at the beginning of that council meeting, Mr. Heredia, that we are doing, that we'll do the ceremonial swearing in, that you can have your family. That'll be the first item after, that'll be the item after the awards and recognition. So that's on the agenda, Mayor, that we'll, now that you've had those words read to you, you'll do it one more time upstairs. So we'll do that again as part of the ceremonial swearing in on Monday evening also.
Great. Thank you. So yeah, certainly we'd invite Mr. Heredia to bring his family and we'll give you a more formal welcome on Monday upstairs. So look forward to that as well. Any questions or concerns or discussion items for the Monday council meeting? All right, hearing none. The next item on the agenda for our study session is to hear a presentation and discuss an update of the 2018 Employee Benefits Program. Mr. Manning, good to have you here. Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. We know it's been an event-filled morning for you already, so we'll try to expedite this just as quick as we can. But I'm Gary Manning with Human Resources. With me today is Jan Ashley, our Benefits Administrator. And we just wanted to spend a few minutes with you and let you know what the employee and retiree benefits programs will look like for 2018 and what changes we are anticipating making to them. First, we just wanted to remind you about what services we currently offer to retirees and to our employees and dependents. We offer three medical plans. We have three dental plans, two vision plans. We do offer basic and supplemental life insurance as well as short-term disability. And of course, we have our Health and Wellness Center for our employees and dependents and some retirees now that offer primary care services. All of those benefit offerings are paid for through the Employee Benefit Trust Fund, which received its monies through contributions from the city, employee and retiree premiums, as well as some monies that we received from the Arizona State Retirement System in the form of subsidies. By far the biggest change that we will be seeing in 2018 is our move to Cigna. And the move to Cigna was not taken lightly. It came after an extensive RFP process with lots of conversation, in-person presentations from all of the vendors, and lots of analysis and discussion with the Budget Office and the City Manager's Office, as well as various employee groups. The decision to move to Cigna really had two primary goals. One was enhanced customer service and an opportunity for some additional cost savings. So for example, Cigna will be offering us 24/7 customer service. So seven days a week, day or night, employees or dependents and retirees can pick up the phone, call a Cigna representative, have their questions answered, resolve any claim issues that they might have. They are also going to be providing us an onsite, full-time Cigna representative that will be housed in our benefits office. And that person's job solely will be on customer service, meeting with employees, educating our employees, resolving any claims issues in a timely manner. Cigna does have an award-winning member portal where we can get online and review our claim status, answer any questions that we might have, do doctor lookups, and have a whole host of medical information that's available to us at our fingertips. We will, for the first time, also be having a national medical network, as opposed to the Arizona or out-of-state networks that we have now. And we don't anticipate there will be much member disruption. One of the first questions we asked, and probably the most important question, was if we moved to Cigna, did that mean employees would have to find other doctors? The good news is, based on the claims data that we submitted to Cigna, anywhere's between 94% and 98% of all of the doctors that our employees and dependents are currently seeing are in the Cigna network. On top of that, if employees want to go to a Cigna medical facility, they can do that as well. If there's one just down the street and they want to do a one-stop shop and have x-rays or prescriptions and see a doctor, they can do that as well. But they're not required to go to those Cigna facilities. They can go through the Cigna network as they're doing now. On the cost side, Cigna is offering us a five-year administrative fee rate guarantee. Now, what that means is, whether we're with Cigna, Blue Cross, Blue Shield, United Health, whichever vendor they might be, they always charge us a monthly, per employee, per month administrative fee. And as you can imagine, each year when we go to renegotiate or renew those contracts, those fees tend to crop up just a little bit. Cigna has promised us a five-year rate guarantee, which is somewhat unheard of in the industry. That as well as, yes?
Could I interrupt? Yes, please.
You might define that just a little bit better after meeting with you two. I understood that the administrative fee versus deductibles, medical rates increase because maybe some will say, well, no fees are going up for five years, but that's not the case, I believe you explained to me. So could you perhaps explain that?
Yes, Mayor, and Councilmember Freeman, that is correct. So remember, we'll have our premium payments that employees and retirees pay each month. On top of that, there are these deductibles, depending on what plan you're on, that you have to meet a certain deductible in order for the city to kick in with their portion, or you might have your co-pays to kick in. These administrative fees are separate apart from any of that. These are on top of, or are figured into, why we perhaps need some of the premium increases that we have. But these administrative fees are behind the scenes, and they're charged on a per-employee per-month basis, but have nothing to do really with the premium fees, or premiums that employees and retirees make.
Gary, can you give us a scale of scope? Administrative fees annually are approximately, under this contract, will be how much?
You know, right now, under Blue Cross, Blue Shield, they range somewhere between $40 and $50.
Total, what the city pays out?
Total would be approximately $2.2 million under the current arrangement.
And then what we pay in claims, what we pay in claims is how much?
Is another $40 to $50 million.
Okay, so that's where, so the, what we're talking about here, whether it's Blue Cross, Blue Shield, Cigna, add a totality of what we pay for health benefits, is a pretty small portion.
It is.
But they help, they help us manage the $50 million that we pay out. That's the key, is it's not so much the fee we pay, the administrative fee, it's what they do to help us manage the claim side, the $50 million. So the $50 million is what we're paying through the claims process back to the doctors and the hospitals and the care providers.
Right.
So, help me, so we're not getting insurance from Cigna, we're getting claims administration from Cigna, because we are our own Employee Benefit Trust, and so the premiums can go up as healthcare costs climb. That's a separate issue from who's, who's running the claims process, which is, we're hiring Cigna to do that. Is that correct?
Yeah, Mayor, that's correct. As a matter of fact, right now, we have Ameribin who processes our claims. Ameribin will be going away as well. So we are leasing the Cigna network, which gives us an opportunity to visit their doctors who are under contract for a reduced fee. The claims themselves will also then pay, be paid, the claims themselves will then be processed through Cigna. But payment for that all comes from the Employee Trust Fund. That trust fund has to be reimbursed, of course, through contributions from the city and from premiums. And part of that, you have to factor in the fees that these organizations charge us for the convenience of having us lease their network as well as process those claims.
Thank you.
Last year, when we came to you, we told you that in 2017, employees and retirees would see an 8% increase in their premiums. We also said that we fully anticipated that in 2018, we would see another 8% increase in premiums. I'm happy to report to you that the claims costs have not come in as high as what we had anticipated. And as a result of that, as well as some of the cost containment reductions that we're going to see with Cigna, we are only proposing a 4% premium increase next year. What that means is, for active employees and, active employees, they're going to see anywhere's between $4 a month to $19 a month, depending on whether they've got single or family coverage and rather, and which plan they're on. Retirees are going to see anywhere between $4 and $15, again, depending on whether it's active, whether it's a single or family coverage and which plan that they're on. Other financial or plan document points that I'd like to call out to your attention is, fortunately, we have seen a reduction in the severity of claims. In 2016, we had over 50 claims that were $100,000 or more, and some of those claims approached $200,000 or more. In 17, we have not quite seen that. Now, we've seen the same number of claims come in, but the severity of the high-dollar claims have reduced as well, which is good news. Next year, we're also going to be reducing the deductibles by about $50, and we're scaling back some of the co-pays that we, we're going to be scaling back some of the increased co-pays that we put in place last year by somewhere between $5 and $20. So although employees are going to see an increase in their premium costs, there will be some give-back in terms of deductibles and those co-pays. One of the exciting opportunities that we're looking forward to is Cigna is going to be giving us $260,000 per year for wellness funding. This will be earmarked funds that will be intended to go strictly towards wellness education and the design and delivery of innovative wellness programs to help keep our employees and dependents healthy. And as a matter of fact, the next presentation you will hear is about our Mesa Wellness 360 Program. And I think you'll be excited to see what that program is going to offer. But those programs will, in part, be paid for by the $260,000 that Cigna will be offering us each year. There were a few other minor plan enhancements and changes that we provided to you as part of your council packet. Those were enumerated both in an executive summary that was color-coded so that you could look in the actual plan document itself, if you wanted to see where the details were, and be happy to answer you, answer any questions that you might have about those. But the primary changes are those that I've described for you here today. This slide is really just a snapshot so that you can see what the city contributions will be next year, what the employee contributions will be. And the very last column there in yellow, again, shows what is the difference in employee payments and premiums between last year and this year. Open enrollment this year will be October 11th through October 25th. It will be a passive enrollment, which means if you don't want to get in and do anything open enrollment, if you're good with whichever plan you're on, you don't have to do anything. We want to be clear, that just because we're moving to Cigna does not, does not mean employees have to get in and do anything with open enrollment. If you're fine with your plan, you don't need to.
Thank you. Mr. Luna?
Thank you for that wonderful presentation. I'm on this committee that, they worked very hard to come up with a wonderful package, so I appreciate all your hard work. Now, what if there's an employee that specifically has their favorite doctor that they want to continue with? What kind of opportunities do they have? Do they have to change doctors, or can they be part of the, of the insurance plan? What do you recommend that they do?
Mayor and Councilmember Luna, the first thing that we would do is take a look at the Cigna network, take a look at, at that doctor, make sure that they are in the Cigna network. As we said, anywhere's between 94% to 98% of them are in the network. We fully anticipate that doctor will be there. So that would be the first thing, is do the online portal lookup to see if the doctor is there, or contact the benefits office, and we'd be happy to assist them in making sure the doctor is there. If the doctor is not there, we're going to reach out to the doctor and see if they would be willing to entertain a Cigna contract and get them on board. And at least with Blue Cross, Blue Shield, in those rare instances where the doctors or the hospital facility or the medical provider isn't in network, we've actually had some pretty good success in fostering, facilitating that conversation to get them on contract. So we're going to work hard with the employee to see if we get that doctor in network as well. So we will, at a minimum, be able to do that. The Health and Wellness Benefits Fair this year is October 12th. It'll run from 9:00 to 2:00 at the Mesa Convention Center. All employees and retirees are invited there. As in prior years, we will be offering our flu shots. And of course, all of our wellness and benefit providers will be there to offer education and answer any questions that employees may have. And that's it.
Great. Thank you very much, Gary. Remind us again, how many, roughly, how many employees does the City of Mesa have? And how many people will be participating in this program?
We have just over 4,000 employees. By the time you count dependents, I think we're up towards about 13,000.
Between employees, retirees, and dependents, we have about 13,300 members in the, in the medical plan.
Okay. So this impacts a lot of, a lot of lives.
It does.
It does.
Thank you. Council, any additional, yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Freeman?
Mr. Manning, the Cigna, well, while I was, I couldn't get the answer for Vice Mayor, so I'll ask you, who knows what, what's going on? But could you go more in-depth with the Cigna wellness funding, the 260,000? If that's the next, okay, I just want to make sure we're covering it. Thank you, sir.
Just in an overview, Mayor and Councilmember Freeman, that was just part of the, that was just part of the proposal that they gave to us when we put out the RFP, that, you know, here are all the things that we'll be giving to the City of Mesa should you select us as the provider. And one of the many advantages that they put forward was the 260,000 that they were going to give to us annually. And we did not have any other vendor that offered that kind of wellness funding.
Thank you.
Yes.
Got it.
Okay.
Thank you. If there's no further questions, thank you very much.
You bet. Thank you.
This is, there's no action item here, but we appreciate the update. Okay. The next item on our agenda is to hear a presentation and provide direction on the proposed Mesa Wellness 360 Program. Nicole, welcome.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Excited to be here this morning to present to you our new Mesa Wellness 360 Program. As Gary had alluded to, with our switch to Cigna, they are providing annual funding for wellness initiatives, specifically for education, wellness activities, and also wellness financial incentives, which you'll see all incorporated in the Mesa Wellness 360 Program. So the Mesa Wellness 360 Program is a voluntary program for city employees to participate and improve their health and wellbeing. We'll be offering a number of activities, screenings, and classes throughout the calendar year of 2018 for employees to participate in. And by their participation, they will earn wellness points, which earn them wellness dollars. They have the opportunity to earn up to a $400 annual incentive by participating in wellness activities and improving their health. Again, some of those examples of activities that people can complete are actual classes and events and contests that we'll have here at the city, but also just regular screenings that they go to their annual, annual exam to their medical provider, or going to the dentist's office, or getting your vision exam. Those all earn wellness points and are creating healthy behaviors, and hopefully we're keeping up on their health. And that's why they'll be earning that incentive. So how this incentive would work includes, you would earn up to $200 in gift cards in the calendar year of 2018. So every time, the point total, they want to reach the 1,000 wellness points. And every time they reach 250 points, they would get a $50 gift card, Visa gift card, for their participation in completing their wellness activities. Giving them up to $200 in gift cards in 2018. And if they hit that 1,000 points, they'd also get $200 off annually for their 2019 health insurance premium. And so how to get started, we're actually, I'm doing a lot of roadshows right now with all the departments, talking about the program in more detail. In November, we'll have the how-to guide, all the information about the program that's coming out. And in December 1st, everybody would get an email to participate and log into this wellness portal, essentially. It's a mobile app as well, and begin participating in the program for 2018.
Why don't you explain to council, you have kind of a pilot program going on now with some of the departments? And we've, we've worked on that this year, and now we're going to take with this, with the assistance of $260,000, we're going to roll this out to the whole city. But just kind of give a sense of one, some of the activities that are taking place right now with the selected departments that are engaged.
Definitely. Sorry, I didn't give that background at first. So we've been doing a pilot program for the past year with 500 employees here at the city in water, energy, and IT, specifically in those departments. They've had high engagement and participation in the program, whether it be contests, classes, getting their screenings, and recording their activity in this, in this portal, essentially. We've offered biometric screenings, and we'll be doing the same thing this next year for our employees.
Thank you. Mr. Luna?
Nicole, thank you for all your hard work. I appreciate all you do for our city employees. Maybe you want to talk about the Wellness Bingo? I know we have that next, next month, right?
Yes, yes. Speaking of wellness activities, we're kicking off a sponsored challenge from Vice Mayor Luna called Wellness Bingo. And so it's a bingo card of 25 different activities for city employees to participate in and complete throughout the month of October. And if they complete their bingo card and turn it in at the end of the month, they'll be entered into a raffle to win some fitness prizes and some other cool wellness things. So, yeah, thank you.
Usually bingos require council approval. Okay. Are you going to be presenting when it's time to approve that?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll have some, some fun challenges. I believe that City Manager Chris Brady agreed to a challenge next year called Beat the Boss. And it's an activity, Beat the Bo, Beat the Boss.
Oh, well, that's less exciting.
Is that, is that as in like a pinata?
No, it's actually a, an activity-based challenge. And so we will be working to have more steps in our day than City Manager Chris Brady over a three-week period. So we'll be, we'll have leaderboards within this wellness portal and on your mobile app so you can kind of see how you're doing versus Chris Brady. And it should be a lot of fun for everybody here at the city.
Sure will be.
And just, again, I remind, I know that benefits just reminded us of this, but the Health and Benefits Fair coming up in two weeks on October 12th at Mesa Convention Center, will be offering a number of screenings with companies assured imaging and prostate cancer screenings, doing 3D mammography and skin cancer screenings as well at that event.
So Mayor and Council, this is really kind of one of the hallmarks that we think as an employer of choice in local government that we have, is really our wellness program and not including all the programs that you've heard Nicole talk about. And she's done a great job of working with the departments and helping them to see the benefits and how easy it is to get involved in good wellness, holding classes, especially on chronic diseases, so that we can identify those early and find ways to change habits or lifestyles to avoid kind of those long-term, high, very expensive medical costs in the future. But I would still say that one of the hallmarks that we've done in the last, how long has it been, Gary, since we've done the Wellness Center? Six years, four years? Four years? It's that Wellness Center is well utilized, we have great, we have some of the, I think we have some of the best medical care providers anywhere. They're great, because they only work for the City of Mesa. Their clients are only Mesa employees and their dependents. And so the quality of care, the level of care there is significant. And it's making a difference, that having that free and that access improves the quality of the, provides a significant amenity for employees. But for us, I mean, the employees enjoy that, but at the end of the day, whatever we can do to encourage preventative care, wellness activities, we know on the backend that, for that employee, and I tell the employees, we're very selfish about this, we want them to be, to work all the time. We don't want them taking sick days, and we want them to be healthy. We don't want to have them to work about, worry about their family members who may be struggling with illness or sickness, because they can have quality care access very easily now. And, and at the end of the day, we think, after all that, maybe secondary to that, though, becomes, that we do, will see, and we are starting to see more cost containment on our benefits, because we're able to identify, and we have many stories that we could share with you about how individuals with children or individuals have come in through the Wellness Center, and because they don't just get a care about checking out the sore throat, they get, they get a whole, what's the word?
Holistic assessment.
Assessment. We have identified potentially life-ending chronic diseases that have been identified quickly by our medical staff, because they don't just spend the time asking them about the sore throat, but they ask all the questions, they spend a lot of time with the employees, because their goal is to look and make sure we have a very healthy employee. So this is just one part of a, I think, a very successful program in Mesa.
Thank you. Gary, Nicole, any additional presentation on?
No, I'm just going to pass around a handout to all of you here at the end, just as a reminder for both of you.
Great. Well, I'll just say, I amend, Mr. Brady just said that this is a nice perk for our employees, and we want our employees to feel valued and for people to want to work for the City of Mesa. That's a big part of what we are. But at the same time, there's a selfish motivation to this, because wellness programs save money, because they, we avoid, you know, if we can discourage people from being sedentary and being overweight and not being in tune with their wellness, then that saves us and saves less claims that get paid out ultimately in our, from our Employee Benefit Trust. So, so it's a, it's a win-win situation. So, great program, appreciate the good work that's gone into this. If there's no additional discussion or questions regarding this?
Mayor, I do have a question.
Yes.
Nicole, thank you very much for the presentation. And I like where we're going with this. I think the wellness activities, along with our wellness program that we have, or the Wellness Center that we have, is great for our employees and for our family and so forth. I would be curious if we were, if we would be looking, or if we would ever look at, if we're going to do an incentive to people and payouts annually, would it be, or could we ever start looking at, like gym memberships for some, for our employees, and, and perhaps discounts? Or provide, like, free membership to employees to, like, the Red Mountain Fitness Center so that they can take some of the classes? Because, you know, as a, as a self-funded entity, it looks like we would try to reduce our, our insurance by ensuring that we have healthy employees. And so this is kind of like, this is kind of like one of the starters, I think, of long-term, you know? We, we want people to exercise regularly, we want to encourage exercise regularly so that people are fit, you know, their stress, they have less stress, you know, healthier backs, healthier legs, and, you know, healthier bodies in general. So would we ever start looking at that? Because I would think that that would help lower some of our insurance premiums over the long term if we were to be able to provide our employees with an opportunity to utilize workout facilities, whether, whether we pay for the gym memberships or they use some of our, our own city facilities.
Councilmember Thompson, thank you for that question. We do have a number of discounts with about nine different fitness vendors here in the Mesa community, including our own Red Mountain Multi-Generational Center. So we do have discounts for city employees currently. And I believe one of the reasons that we're looking at doing this incentive for participation in wellness activities, that individuals can use that incentive on any choice of what they want, hopefully health-related. That is really the goal, is that they could use it on a fitness membership, or buying a new fitness device, or using it for some of their healthcare costs. And so that's kind of what we're looking at, hoping that this incentive can help go towards.
Buying more fruits and vegetables.
And buying more fruits and vegetables, yes.
I guess what I, what I'm steering toward is, you know, the, the program that Able Engineering had, Chris, I think you saw the program that they offer their employees. And it's phenomenal in the fact that it actually lowered their insurance premiums as their employees got on board. And, you know, where they, they eventually rolled it, where it's all taken care of in-house, but, which I don't know necessarily with the number of employees that we have that we could do that. But I thought it was a phenomenal program that they had, and I would love to see us move into, into something of that nature, where we can really contain our costs by ensuring our employees are afforded the opportunity, every opportunity to, to be healthy.
Yeah, and Mayor, Councilmember Thompson, and that's, I think, what we've done is we've tried to create the financial incentive, so they get, they can make that choice, whether they want to use that for gym membership, or whether they want to use it for other devices. Well, I guess what we're trying to look at is creating the flexibility so the individual can make that choice. We, because we have some employees who have access to fitness equipment that's included as part of the place where they work from. So we've tried to balance that out, so it makes it equal for everybody. But we'll continue to look at the opportunity to encourage and, and create more discounts for those who are participating in these programs to get a low-cost health, workout benefits. We can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. If there's nothing else, well, again, thank you for the presentation. We'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is appointments to the, to the Judicial Advisory Board and the Housing and Community Development Board. Council, you've seen those names. Is there a motion to that effect? Thank you, Mr. Freeman and Mr. Glover. All in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next item on our agenda is approval of minutes from an executive session held on September 21st of this year. Is there a motion? Thank you, Mr. Luna and Mr. Freeman. All in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next item is acknowledged receipt of minutes of various boards and committees. Again, is there a motion? Thank you, Mr. Glover. Thank you, Mr. Luna. All in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Thank you. Next item is information pertaining to the current job order contracting projects. Council, you've seen these. Are there any questions regarding any item on that list? Okay, hearing none. The next item is hear reports on meetings and conferences attended. Thank you, Mr. Glover.
Councilmember Freeman and myself had the opportunity to attend Arizona Forward along with, carry-
with Kerry Kent and other staff members. We received two Merit Awards for the Alhambra Hotel and the Use It Wisely campaign, and we received a Criscordia for the Idea Museum and their recycle program for youth.
Thank you. Well, congratulations to the Alhambra Hotel and to the Idea Museum. Those are well-deserved honors. Any other reports on meetings or conferences? Hearing none. Mr. Brady, what, tell us about our schedule of future meetings.
Mayor, Council, your next meeting will be a study session and council meeting this coming Monday, October 2nd. So we'll see you then.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Thank you, Mr. Luna and Mr. Glover. All in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned.